Sorry, we're a little bit delayed. We were downstairs with the Falls City Council, but I would like to call to order the Monday, 1st of June, 2015, meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission. Ms. G.
Mr. John.
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry.
Here.
Mr. Meeks.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Ms. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Teetz.
Here.
Mr. Budisca.
Here.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Hot dog. Does anyone have a petition about an item not already on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Old business, none. That takes us to new business. Number A, public hearing on Mason Row. So, as you may or may not know, and I think you all know, but if you don't know, the developer has deferred. And actually, I'll let you explain, well, explain what we're doing, and then we'll, I'll pick it up. That'll be quicker.
As you said, the applicant has requested a deferral. All due to their plans submission on June 19th, that may involve major changes to the project. So, the April submission in your packet is not the final form of this project as currently under normal. Thus, staff recommends that the planning commission continue the meeting by a thorough final consideration and recommendation to the city council. And that's where we stand tonight.
Yes, so, let's say that again on the dates.
Sure. So, the applicant has requested a deferral of this public meeting due to their planned submission on June 19th. That may entail major changes to the project. So, the April 8 submission in your packet is actually not the final form of the project, and it's currently undergoing revisions. Thus, staff recommends that the planning commission continue the public meeting to July 20th for a final consideration.
Well, okay, so, let's just review that. So, that means we're going to get theoretically the new plan on June the 19th.
That's correct.
So, if we get it June the 19th, we would then theoretically have a work session.
That's correct.
Shortly thereafter. The next scheduled public meeting would be?
On July 20th.
Yes. And then, we would theoretically vote on it in August.
You would theoretically vote on it on July 20th?
Well, that isn't going to happen, but, so...
Or continue it, that's right.
That's, we'll continue it. But, so, the substantive public meeting, for those of you keeping score, is now July 20th, right? Okay. But, that assumes that the plan that we're going to get on June 19th is?
Final.
Complete.
As we understand it, it's your?
Actionable.
Final revisions, yes, that's right.
Yeah, right, okay. So, with that in mind, I have speaker slips. This is great. Unfortunately, this is a lot of hard work, because they have revised, they're in the process of revising their plan, and I, and I think that is very much a moving target. And tell me what, if there's anything you know about their plan of substance?
We actually have just a brief introduction, like, four minutes, that'll give you an update, and just to give you some context for this evening.
Okay.
Very brief.
Well, so, here's what we're going to do. Let's get that introduction. I'm happy to hear everyone's comments. Here's what I would ask. If you have a long comment about a plan that's subject to change, maybe you could make it in, like, 17 seconds, because you've come all this way, instead of taking a long time, because obviously, that plan is subject to change. We're very interested in what you have to say, but remember, we're going to do this again on a plan that's going to look theoretically very different on July the 20th.
June, June 19th.
It's on June 19th.
Well, no, the plan will look different June 19th, but the next public hearing is July the 20th.
Right.
Assuming that the plan that comes to us is workable on the 19th.
So...
And, I'm sorry, and just to add, as we mentioned, we would have an interim work session with you prior to that date.
Correct.
Either July 6th, or the following Monday.
Correct.
So, we would schedule that accordingly.
And, we, of course, at that time, just for those of you, again, keeping score, because I know this is getting confusing, in the event, for example, that we don't have a completed staff report, or there are great challenges with the plans, or this is in any way a non-executable or actionable plan, we have no intention of voting on something until we have something to vote on. And, of course, at this moment, we have nothing to vote on, because the plans are now changing. So, my guess at this moment is that the likelihood that we will actually vote on this, you know, in a month that's considered a summer month, is becoming smaller and smaller by the moment. But, I don't, I don't want to...
Regent.
No, I mean, it just seems unlikely that this schedule is going to hold.
And then, August, we don't have meetings. One?
Maybe we'll have one, or something.
I guess we're asking for a general statement.
All right.
Well, their concerns will be the same, no matter what.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right. So, brief introduction. We're interested in what you have to say, but again, because this is, you know, very much a moving target, what I would ask is that you, you know, you try to keep it brief, because we're going to get to do this all over again, which will be fun, for all of us, so. Mr. Fuller.
So, I'll just cut out some of the topic areas that I prepared for the briefing, and focus on the issues that we highlighted in the staff report, which we've communicated to the applicant to consider for their revisions, and also their anticipated revisions as they've communicated to us. So, several issues with the overall project were identified by staff to aid the applicant's deliberations, and I'll, there are eight major items, and I'll just read through those. Number one is incompatibility of scale and massing along Park Avenue, which is of a predominantly residential character. Number two is high residential density that continues to be a concern. Number three is the visual impact of the proposed parking garage along Park Avenue. Number four, the incompatibility of the recently proposed ground-level retail along Park Avenue with the residential character of the street. Number five, a substantive TDM and parking management plan will need to be evaluated for parking reduction and traffic impacts of the overall project. Number six, affordable devolving units do not meet the city's adopted affordable housing policy, and the Housing Commission has indicated a preference for ADUs rather than the cash contribution that the developer has offered. Number seven, applicant's commitment to the proposed retail plan and anchor tenants require further details and verifications. Number eight, which is the last one, really, the proposed on-street loading space and trash access along Northwest Street negatively impacts the potential for a full streetscape. Lastly, staff has met with the applicant a number of times to discuss the project, and it is our understanding that the anticipated revisions with the June 19 submission will include the following changes. Reduction in building height along Park Avenue and Northwest Street. Elimination of the ground-floor retail along Park Avenue. Further step backs, setback, and height reduction with the parking garage along Park Avenue in an effort to mitigate its visual impacts. Redesign of the Park Avenue elevation to include residential uses, and that possibly includes townhomes. Elimination of the trash bay and on-street loading space along Northwest Street and to be serviced internally within the site. Reduction in the residential unit sizes. Development and submissions of a TDM plan. The last item is revised voluntary concessions also to be submitted in June with their June 19 submission. And that really is the gist of the briefing from staff.
Did you say reduction in size of units, or a number of units?
Size of units, that's what we understand.
But, not number.
Thank you.
So, I'm just wondering, our number one and number two, which is scale and massing and the height, or the high-density residential, and then they gave feedback that they're reducing height on Park and West. Have we been specific with them, so that when they come back with reduced height, we're not going to say, hey, that's still too tall? Or are we just saying vaguely, hey, it's too tall and too mass? I've been, I've been hammering on this from the beginning. We need to give them some specifics, or we're going to do this forever. So, hopefully, we've said exactly how high is okay, and how dense is okay.
You just said that downstairs, Mr. Rankin, and I, that, you know, there is actually...
I should point out, I said it a year ago in the first work session as well. Here we are, still talking about it.
Okay, but there is a zoning code, right? So, if it's 55 feet, you get what you get at 55 feet, you don't come in for a special exception. If you come in for a special exception, you ask for, you can come in theoretically and ask for a special exception for, make up a number, right?
Yep.
So, so, we've been specific. The number is 55 feet in, for where the property is zoned. Now, they want to go bigger than that, and we're in the process of suggesting that maybe they could go bigger on Broad Street, because it's 85 feet, you get 30 feet. And then, the question is, you know, what was, if you go back to Plan 1, well, you go back, like, 18 months. So, the original plan had 85 feet just on Broad Street, and then it's crept slowly around. So, we, I mean, but the code is pretty specific.
Okay, so, 55 feet on Park Street, we'll give it a thumbs up.
No, 55 feet where it is zoned.
B1.
B1. And the trick is...
They want to rezone some stuff. Is that okay?
Well, well, no, because, well, that's what, but, so, that's, that's part of the murkiness of this project, because they have residential properties now as part of this consolidation, which is why we were just talking about the consolidation.
Which they want to rezone.
Move, I can ask?
I know, I'm just saying, I understand in your mind, we've given them clear direction all this time. I just don't think that's actually true.
They, okay, but they, they don't have to re, all right, we will pick this up another time. But, so, they're asking to rezone something, but it is zoned. It's not, not, this is not a knowable answer.
No, I know, but I'm saying, if we say to them, hey, we are not going to, I know everyone gets a vote, but I just, the people that have been saying it's too high and too dense, I wish they would say, hey, look, I am not in favor of rezoning it in this way, which means that the height limit is this, and the density is that, and then, and then if we want to, you know, hammer them when they come back with something different, it'll be a lot easier to do.
We'll, okay, so, respectfully, I think, if someone asks to rezone a piece of property with a 30-foot height limit, and put an 85-foot building on it, that's different than if they want to rezone something that's 35 feet to 55 feet, right? So, there's a, there are gradations in this.
Exactly.
So, the suggestion that we're, that the code, or that the city is in some way unspecific about this is not true. What's tricky is if you go back, I don't know if someone's keeping track, I was kind of joking before, if you're keeping score at home, I don't know what plan we're on. Are we, is it six or five? So, it's the fifth plan. So, like, what is it that we're talking about here, really? We have five plans. We still have a staff report that's got more problems than a math book. We've had stuff come before us.
Hey, I'm not, I'm not arguing with that.
We've had stuff come before us once, that had a staff report with, that was a paragraph. Well, no, it's an exaggeration, but it doesn't have anything wrong with it.
I agree. I guess what I'm curious is, on Park Street, there are some lots that are currently zoned residential, that have a height restriction, because they're zoned residential, that are, that the developer would like to obviously build some commercial stuff on. What height do we think would be okay there?
It's...
We don't want to say out loud.
No, then, we have said, the code, they can follow the code. No, there's 35 feet, is the code.
Okay, so, we're not in favor of letting them rezone it to something that we're looking for.
It's, you have to look at the project as a whole. So, we're going to, we're going to go to the public meeting now, with the understanding, with the understanding that the plan is subject to change, because we're now on number five. So, with no further ado, James Morrison.
Hi, I'm James Morrison. I'm here on behalf of the Steeple's Court Homeowners Association. I have spoken both to you and to the council previously about this project, on behalf of the people in the HOA. I did have one concern, which I think is maybe overtaken by events, based on what I just heard, which was about the loading docks, which now would be facing directly toward our street, and very close to our street. If they are going to move that inside the structure, then that would obviate that particular concern. The other things that we were concerned about, number one, the stormwater problem on West Street. There's an old and undersized stormwater pipe that runs behind the houses of Steeple, and under West Street, a few hundred feet from Mason Row. The pipe can't handle the stormwater in unusually heavy storms. Water backs up and shoots across West Street, flooding it on occasion. The city does have plans to fix this water pipe, this stormwater pipe. However, the work is scheduled for several years from now. Coordinating this work with the other wa, the other work that would be occurring on West Street, would, we think, be a very good idea. So, since the pipes are already planned to be replaced, there, if we hold off at this point and go to a later date to replace them, you have a greater traffic impact due to the increased traffic from the Mason Row development. So, it wouldn't cost the city anything to just change its order in the line of things to be done. The second thing we're concerned about is blocking our street. We have a dead-end street that goes into West, and there's only one entry and exit point for the street. It is already crowded on many days at rush hour in the morning and evening. We just would like some kind of marking around there, so that owners would know not to block that street when they're, at the busy times of day, so that we can get in and out. And finally, the intersection of West Street with the Washington and Old Dominion Trail, as many people have pointed out, is extremely dangerous. It is accidents waiting to be, waiting to happen between pedestrians, bicyclists, and cars. There needs to be a rethink of how all those things mesh. I know a lot of people have commented on it, I really hope it will be taken up. I would also like to add that we have discussed several of these points with Spectrum Development, and Peter Batten in particular, and I did find them to be good listeners, and in some cases, making some constructive improvements on the basis of things that we've said to them, such as the, I saw them react to that idea for pedestrian walkway facing Grove, which I think would enhance the building. So, those are our concerns, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cindy Whackin, Whackerbarth?
Whackerbarth.
Yep.
Cindy Whackerbarth, I live at 304 Walnut Street, in Ellison Heights. I've tried to keep abreast of all what's going on. I was glad to hear downstairs, and I'm glad to hear that the garbage dock is being reconsidered. I'm glad to hear that 85 feet is being considered seriously. I'm not in favor of 85 feet, I think 55, if we can keep 55, that would be good. I've visited with 35 of my neighbors in the last few days, and I have, they have signed a petition asking for a delay of the Mason Row decision, and I don't know...
Oh, you go back to them, and you told them you did such good work? You, you nailed it! You are, you're getting free drinks all over town.
Don't you want another piece of paper?
Oh.
Okay, so, they are concerned, some of them are very new, you know, these are the eight houses that have now become 16. Some of them are settling in, they don't know too much about what's going on in Falls Church, but they are concerned, and every single one wants to make sure that this is well-done. Personally, I attended a previous meeting, and I asked the question about LEEDs, LEEDs certification for the project, and I just was looking on the paper, and it said, it was one of the papers I picked up at the door, and it's had something about LEEDs. But, is this project to be, is Mason Row to be LEEDs? If it is or it isn't, I would recommend that it is. I think for the future, for the environment, for Falls Church showing itself to be progressive, I think we need to consider that. Okay, I have a question. If a special exception on height is agreed upon, does that mean that future discussion of this will not need to happen, because it will just be foregone conclusion that the whole city can be 85 feet without further discussion? It's just something.
No.
That it can go in, you know, then we can just say, 85 feet is fine in this neighborhood, this neighborhood, doesn't matter. I'm just, it's a thought that occurred to me.
No, it's, it's each project, and that's why I'd say special exception. So, we're not setting a precedent.
Okay. So, where are the studies that show that this project is going to provide economic relief now and in the future? Where is the study that shows that there will be ample increase in tax revenue to cover the children generated by this project? Everybody I spoke to wants to make sure that the development is done right. I do too. It's clear to me that you are working hard on this, and thank you very much for listening, and thank you. And I keep my papers?
Absolutely.
Okay. And you said a free drink?
You'd say, hey, it's delayed.
A free drink?
Yeah, you go back. Mike Winters?
No.
Mr. Winters.
Hi, hello, Mr. Mike Winters, from 324 Grove Avenue. And I built the model, which is suffering from humidity, but it, this isn't about the massing, it isn't about the structure, it was built specifically to answer some questions that the developer, I stood at this spot here, and three times asked for some perspectives, and some renderings that showed, because I was real curious, as slides came up, we didn't see much about what was happening opposite the WNOD, that was just part that wasn't in there. So, out of curiosity, I threw this together, and a couple things became real apparent, as I said, gosh, where did the semis go? If you're familiar with the plan, there's three 30-foot loading spots, one that's addressed directly in item 12, which is the on-street loading space, that's a 30-foot space. And interior, on Mason Row, there's two 30-foot spaces. Bread truck, great. Cisco truck, great. Semi tractor-trailer with Virginia roads allow 53-foot trailers on a truck of unlimited size, which typically is between 65 and 70 feet. They go to Giant, they go to CVS, they go all around. How are they going to get here? There is no internal space for a semi, so I got real concerned. And then, I focused on the WNOD area. The parking on West Street, which is, as you mentioned, and I'll just read it off, so everybody has the benefit. "The on-street loading, number 12 issue, the on-street loading space and trash access above Alco proposal along Northwest Street substantially narrows a section of that streetscape to less than 10 feet in width, and requires city council exception for loading space on public street rather than onsite as required." There's been a lot of talk about the trash, not a lot about the parking that's going on there. So, your recommendation, which came up tonight, staff has recommended to the applicant that they develop a trash pickup plan that uses the internal street and site. This will allow full streetscape around the entire perimeter of the site. I agree with that, that directly addresses the trash. It's not clear, I can kind of infer it from the comments, that the parking will not be allowed, and we'll have the full 20-foot streetscape, which we have today. If, and even if that's the case, there, there really is no way so a semi can get into Mason Row, do its delivery, and I worry that if there is no proper spot for it, they'll do like they do outside of 7-Eleven now, and just stop on West Street. So, if, unless the developer is forced to come up with a plan to deal with semis, and I talked to a couple Giant drivers, and they said, yeah, you go down the ramp to the underground parking, there's a dock, and I went over to Merrifield to check out what they're doing, and some are back-end docks, some are drive-in docks. We need something. We're silly if we think semis won't be up here all the time. And we also haven't seen, although we've often asked for it, shadow studies, which is one of the reasons this was built, and of course, we'll wait and see what the new. And the other is a rendering, and I brought here something that I downloaded from the internet, it's from a different movie residential. Kind of curious, it has a lot of the same issues, but don't need to go into that. But, the point is, if, I'll just turn it in here. You can see that it's a beautiful 3D rendering, shows the streets, shows people, shows cars, it makes, it's all in context, and that's what we've been asking for. And what we get are little snippets of the development with what they call ghost trees. You're like, that's a house there, why is there a ghost tree? It would be great, and I think it would be helpful to you and all the commissions in the city to see in context what they're talking about. It's very hard to do here in what they present, so...
Absolutely.
I think it's a great time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your model. Rohini Winters.
Thank you, Chairman Meeks, members of the Planning Commission. Rohini Winters, 324 Grove Avenue. I've spoken before to this commission and others on this issue. I would rather that you just have asked the developer to allow the timeline to proceed and vote on the submission. We were promised that the shadow studies and the TDM and everything would be in by the end of May, so that a decision could be made for the project to go or not go, and I feel like we're continuing something rather than making a decision and then letting it start again if it needs to. And maybe that's not the right way to run a project that you want for economic development in the city, but I don't fully understand why we keep letting the developer delay and not meet their promised deadlines. What, what do we think is going to happen if they don't meet their promised revenues? Thank you.
Lisa Varoxas. Was that close? Is that close?
Close. Lisa Varoxas.
Varoxas.
Yes. Hi, I'm Lisa Varoxas from 301 Grove Avenue. I have also spoken before and written you all lots and lots of letters, but since the developer is now promising us, promising us a new version of their plan, most of my little presentation tonight will be short. When reviewing this and the future projects that will come before you, such as the Gordon Road Triangle, the newly acquired land near George Mason and Mary Ellen Henderson Schools, and the recently sold property at Broad and Washington Streets, do not look at each project myopically. Instead, consider the cumulative impact of all of the projects once they are completed. Each will have its own impact on the schools, the city's infrastructure, and the quality of life of the residents, many of whom wish to keep the small-town charm Falls Church currently offers. Thanks.
Lorraine O'Rourke. Oh, for heaven's sakes.
Hi, I'm Lorraine O'Rourke from 807 Lincoln Avenue, and I'm glad to hear the developers have given us another version to look at. And to keep my 17 seconds here, I'm just going to say, please say no to 85 feet on anything that faces Park Avenue or West Street. It's just too big and just too dense. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that really was 17 seconds. Laura Gogel.
Hi, Laura Gogel from 308 Pine Street, and I recognize a lot of you guys, appreciate all that you do to help the city this way. I also have similar comments, so I don't have a lot to say. I am pleased to hear that there's going to be some reworking done on the proposal. I have been concerned for a long time, especially about the height on Park and West, and so I was happy to hear that that's one of the things that they intend to address. Hopefully, that will be the case. I think that that really is the, my biggest concern, is sort of the height and the character, how, what, what goes there deals with the rest of the neighborhood, and how it integrates with the rest of the city and that neighborhood there. I live in the Ellison Heights area as well, the one that we just described has gone from mostly single-family homes to lots of those now double, double lots that have been split up. So, there's a big increase in density just, that we're just absorbing right there in our neighborhood right now, and we're really enjoying all of our new neighbors, but it's definitely made a difference in our neighborhood. And, and I think it's, we're already seeing some impact in the traffic and other things around there. So, looking carefully at all that, a lot of people I know are looking at that. I also think that, I don't know how much you guys focus on the economic development piece, that may be more economic development authority, but I also agree that that's something to look at carefully. I think a lot of why we're doing this is because we want to get the tax benefit, and I, and I think we need to really look carefully at whether we're going to get the benefit we're, we're hoping to get. The last thing I would say, well, the two last things are, I am concerned about the new timing that we're getting, because I, and I hear from you guys that you're also thinking a lot about that, because I think if something comes in in June, and then you guys are doing work sessions in July, a lot of people aren't around at that time. And I think that, I want to make sure that so many people are getting concerned about this, that they all have time to understand the new proposal that comes up, and to really look at it again, because it seems like every time we dig in and analyze a program, it gets changed. And we're happy it's getting changed, but I also think we're going to need to look carefully at whatever the new proposal is, and to make sure we have the time to do that. And I also agree that it is important to give the developer clear direction about what would be acceptable to us, and so clearly, no, no change, no variances, we know would be acceptable. I don't know how much that would work for them, and if they're looking for some signals from city officials about what sort of middle ground would be acceptable, I think it's important to be clear, so that they're not wasting a lot of time and money, too. So, I'm sensitive to that, and I appreciate their efforts. So, I'm sensitive to that and appreciate their efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Aline O. Right.
Thank you for all the work you're doing. I just wanted to give a voice to the community of Jennifer Lane. Our townhouse is back exactly to West Street, so right now, we have all the noise from the 7-Eleven, which is on the corner of, of Broad and West. And if you come in the morning to our backyard, you can hear the beeping of the, of the reversing trucks. And having the loading dock, I'm glad to hear that it's, it's been considered to move in our backyard and our bedrooms, it's going to be very difficult. So, I would really hope that you would consider not approving that, having a trash dock right on West. I also, when I just keep this short, say, please vote no to 85 because it is extremely high, and it will really cover our visuals, and it's going to make our community very crowded. The other thing is, is what I like about Falls Church, it's a walkable city, and I would hate to see these big buildings that are going to change the character of the city. So, having those high buildings, I, I don't think it fits our community very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul David O'Brien.
Good evening. My name is Paul David O'Brien. I'm a lifelong resident in Northern Virginia, grew up in McLean, Virginia, one mile from the CIA. Was a volunteer fireman in Vienna, Virginia in the late 70s and early 1980s, and have lived in Falls Church, address county slash member of Falls Church and St. James Catholic Church since most of 17 years minus two years. And in all honesty, I came here tonight to speak, but I have a very fast-growing international business with an office in the office building that you're familiar with, across from St. James Catholic School, the six, five-story building with Foundation Area Insurance up on the top of the building. And in all honesty, I wanted to come and share some thoughts about the situation with Mason Row, but I just wasn't able to get to it. So, I'm going to pass tonight and come to the next meeting, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Albert Tibbetts.
Hi, I'm Albert Tibbetts at 305 Grove Avenue, very near the project. I'd like to say thank you for the work you're doing related to the city and helping us plan through things. I am totally frustrated by the lack of deadlines being met and it pushing into the summer like the other woman was saying, because summer in, is not predictable about who, who's in town, and, and it takes longer to get stuff reviewed personally when you're vacationing, when you're doing things with the family, et cetera. And I did look at some of the documents that were online, and I remember looking at the traffic study and seeing that the traffic counts were rather old. I wanted to know if we're going to have updated traffic counts, or is there an updated traffic count that I'm missing when I, when I looked through that stuff? It was, I skimmed it at a rather rapid pace, but I think the terrible, I think traffic is terrible now, and I don't understand how a project this side is, this size is not going to make it worse. I was just coming from 66 down Route 7 into the city and on a, whatever night it was, but it was a weeknight and it was rush hour, and I just thought about, hey, we're going to have people trying to make a movie at this exact time. And now, you can't get down West Street, I mean, Route 7, Broad Street, in any kind of reasonable fashion without planning for delay at each light and it being gridlocked and the traffic around the WNO Trail, which is very near our community, is, it is totally unsafe. I feel like somebody's going to get hit, somebody, something's going to happen, and then we'll, you know, everybody will be saying, why didn't we solve it? And I think you now have a chance to solve some of the problems related to the fact that WNO Trail, Grove Avenue, West Street, that they all come, they're all coming together and right at this project entrance. Please give us a scalable model that we can see. Everyone, and I tend to agree, 85 feet is tall. It's like dropping a little bit of Manhattan right in a neighborhood. So, show us what it's going to look like and show us as soon as possible. And work the traffic thing out. And if anybody can update me about the traffic study and when the counts were made, and are we going to have new counts that are relatively recent?
Well, that's, so, in the staff report that they had, part of that is the TDM study, and that's part of that.
And are you saying that has been, already been done and completed?
No, 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 no. So, when he went through the eight issues.
Okay.
That's an issue.
Okay. So, it's a concern of the city to have it updated and?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Because when, because when was, when was it done, before?
Well.
Please.
The June 19 submission is supposed to provide all the updated documents, and that's going to be included in that as we're told, for the program.
Okay. So, there's been no traffic count to date yet? It's supposed to happen between now and June 19?
There's an old count. It's going to be, the document itself is supposed to be updated for the June 19 submission.
Okay. When, when, what counts are they basing it off?
I was just looking at the traffic study. It's, it's not obvious real quick what the date is. I want to say 2013 is the, when the data was.
Yeah, but would we allow that to be used, 2013?
Our traffic engineer will, will look at it and understand that. What they're going to be updating is, is their program changes. So, in other words.
I know.
Yeah, so.
That doesn't solve, solve traffic stuff.
Everything's being based on.
All right. Well, I think that's outdated, I think that's totally outdated, and it needs to be updated. It needs to be accurate, or else we're going to have people avoiding this project because of the traffic. And that's not what we want, right? We want people to come, so, please require updated study. Thank you.
Okay. Madeline English.
I have been interested in this project from the beginning, but I haven't had much time to really, I have submitted one letter, but I haven't had time to really submit my thoughts, and I really do not have them written down quite clearly because I just buried my husband on Saturday after a long illness. But my concern is that this is such a massive building. It's absolutely ugly. There's nothing set back so that we have some green grassy tree area. Now, if we want to become a, a concrete jungle, that's what we are becoming. We are a village. We are a small city. We are surrounded by giants. We have limited space to build, and we have to be aware of a budget. I, through many years, had to live within my budget, and I think the community has to do also. But I think not only limiting the size, but by, I think, would be best to limit it to the apartments, because I'm not against, I'm not against growth. I realize the, that things are becoming more expensive through the years, but I think we need to reduce the size to the apartments and to the ground level of either, at ground level with retail, a nice upscale restaurant, which we don't have now. But to put a movie theater, an apartment, I mean, hotel, I just think it's just overwhelming, overwhelming the area, traffic concerns, and we have a traffic concern anyway and have for years on Grove Avenue with people coming from McLean and going down. And also, you're going to smile because, and sitting here, and I'm thinking about open green area, you realize that you have approximately 340 apartments. So, therefore, I figure you'll have approximately 300 dogs. Not only do you have no open grassy space for people to sit and enjoy and have, have a meal at this upscale restaurant, but you have no facilities for the, for the puppies. So, I think that needs to be in consideration. And just in, as a joke, it was mentioned that the open space could be used for West, West End Park, and my reply was, over my dead body. So, I would like to thank you for your consideration and time taking to review this project. Thank you.
Ms. English, I was sorry to hear about your loss. I had the opportunity about 10 years ago to walk through West End Park with your husband, and it was, it was an afternoon I will never forget. He was a, a great character, and thank you very much for coming. So, I'd like to close the public hearing. Any Planning Commissioner comments really quickly? Our next item is not here, so we have a few brief moments. But the moment our next item gets here, I'm cutting you off, so, speak quickly.
I'll make a comment.
I don't have, I don't have a comment.
No, we're going to close this. We've closed the public hearing. You got anything to say about this? You got the, you got the whole thing here?
No comment.
Yeah, I have, I have a comment. We had in our packet of information on this particular item, a rather large amount of public comment, some from people who are here and some from other people. It's always helpful to us to get this. I made a list of all the concerns. I think that you've hit on most of them, but I just want you to know that we do pay attention and try to, try to get all your concerns addressed. And one, a couple of letters said that they had some concerns over the council not being receptive to citizens, or the developers listening but not addressing their concerns. I, I really hope you don't feel that way, because our council people do listen, and, and they are concerned about this as we are, as are the developers. I mean, they can't go ahead without paying some attention to your concerns. So, we're, we really will, will work harder on this and, and try to make sure that not every concern is addressed, but most of them are. Thank you.
Russ?
Well, I want to sort of mirror what Ms. Rogers said. You know, we, I took notes as well, and we have it each of these public hearings. We've had many work sessions that are, while they're open to the public, they're not generally well-attended. And I felt, I have felt that these concerns that the citizens have had are very consistent, and I believe we have communicated them in meeting after meeting. And, and I feel like part of the reason we've had five submissions is because the developer continues to make modifications in response to the comments of the citizens and also the Planning Commission and the council. I think this is a, you know, a unique project, and certainly how many iterations we've seen, but there are a lot of people working very hard on trying to make this a workable project, both from a tax revenue standpoint, that's not really our purview, but also from a project that makes sense from a size perspective, how it impacts the neighborhood, how it impacts, you know, development in general along this corridor. So, I really just want to say personally that I appreciate all the comments. We have definitely passed them on in the past, will continue to do that, and in many cases, we share those beliefs. I mean, they're, they're not, the comments that you're making are clear when you look at these type of drawings. Each of us has been doing this for several years at the very least and seen numerous developments over time, so we, we have the same concerns that jump at us, jump out at us, in addition to others that have not been mentioned. And for what it's worth, I've found the developer to be fairly receptive to those, but they, it's a moving target because the comments keep coming in and the concerns shift as each plan comes in. So, I appreciate your patience and certainly appreciate you coming before us and, and giving your comments. It's a very helpful perspective, but we are taking our time and the best effort we can to make this project the best it can be for Falls Church, because it's going to be something that's going to be here for quite a while, and you want to get that right. So, thank you.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, I want to follow along with what Mr. Rodeska and Ms. Rogers had to say. I think that in this situation, it is a very large piece of land. It's one of the largest that we've dealt with in comparison to other developments. And, and I think that the developers have, in many cases, tried to listen, and then they changed it, for instance, with the condos, took the condos away, and, you know, so there's been some give or take there, you know, saying we don't, that we didn't want the housing, now we want the housing. So, there's been a lot of confusion along the way as to what the neighborhood will accept and what we will also accept. But I think that everybody's trying to do their very best at listening and responding. There are some things with, that, you know, make sense and other things that probably don't. So, we do appreciate all your hard work, and we're working with you. And thanks for attending and along that line.
Okay. So, just a quick note on the timing. So, I wasn't as clear as I may have been about this. There is another public hearing at this moment scheduled for Monday, the 20th of July. I have no intention, because for a variety of reasons, not the least of which I don't think it's fair, to have a public hearing and then vote, because you have a public hearing and it's not a democratic process, it's really just a coronation. So, anything that we do in the next public hearing, which at this moment is 20th of July, there would theoretically be revisions before we would vote again. So, we are not voting on anything on the 20th of July. We would vote subsequent to those changes made after the 20th of July, which could be in August and it could be in September. So, and insofar as we control very little, we actually do control the agenda, and I have no intention of changing, changing our tune on that one. It's conceivable, you know, to me that this will be a beautiful project with no problems and no issues, and everyone will love it and stand here and sing a chorus of songs on the 20th of July, but, you know, we'll see. You never, you never know how that's going to go. So, thank you very much again. I think we all appreciate it. Without any further ado, we're going to move on to number B, the Mount Daniels School Perfect timing. No, hang on.
Just, yeah. You would need to make a motion to continue the public hearing to a date certain.
I would like a motion to continue to a date certain.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this item until July 20.
A second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Continued till July 20.
Thank you.
And now.
I think it's ridiculous that we got sent all this crap. I mean, come on. It all, April 8th, you know.
I didn't want to go, but I've gone through all of the comments, the citizens, compiling a list, and this was the last one of those reviews. I didn't want to go, but I've gone through all of the comments, the citizens, compiling a list, and this was the last one of those reviews.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I am delighted to be here again tonight to share an update on Mount Daniel. And you do have a packet that we brought for you. And I apologize that we didn't get this in your packet last week, but this is hot off the press at the end of last week with the newest drawings. The very first page in the packet is just to give you an overview of what the construction zone will look like at Mount Daniel next year. And so this is the map that we've been working on with staff. And when you imagine where the red and the orange really meet in the middle, that is where the entrance to the school is right now, when you go up the big stairs to Mount Daniel. When you come up the stairs, everything on the right-hand side of the building is what gets demolished where it says "construction zone." The left-hand side is the existing kindergarten and that newer wing that are on the left-hand side. For our construction planning, because we lose half of the building, you'll notice the trailers that are shown out in the parking lot area that are numbered one through eight. Those are all classrooms, and those are first-grade classrooms next year. There's also, it's kind of hard to see in here just with the lighting, but the long red trailer, that's actually an office trailer where we relocate our assistant principal and an assistant out there for her, so that they have their own office, and then the existing office will function for our kindergarteners in the old section of the building. And probably the biggest challenge for us in the old section is you only have a stair entrance, because we're losing our level entrance that you have by the cafeteria and the gym area, because it's demolished. So there will be a lift there at the very front of the building to get boxes and deliveries and children that may not be able to take the stairs. So the lift will come in on the front. On the backside, we have four, well, really, there's three, but one large double trailer is the PE activity trailer, and then you also have the media and the art, which are on that backside on the blacktop. And the great thing is for our playground, where our actual playground equipment is, and you'll see the kind of lime-green color up on the top right, the playground equipment stays as-is, and the construction fencing is all, keeps that totally separate. We also, you'll notice there's a blue trailer that's still right next to the playground that says "art," and that really is the construction trailer if we don't need it for a classroom. We are watching our kindergarten numbers very closely this year, so we have an alternate plan to move art out there if necessary, and that way we would have an extra classroom up by the kindergarten area. So we're trying to be very, I guess, proactive, because we just don't know enrollment for kindergarten until it comes. So that's kind of the construction planning as far as the layout of what it looks like next year. Probably the greatest challenge in planning for next year is that half of our staff must be shuttled in, because we lose so much parking. And parking is obviously at a minimum there anyway with the way the land sits now. So we are working on a contract right now, hoping the parking won't be located too far away, and we will have to run a shuttle each day to get staff to and from the school. I'm trying to switch to the next slide on here. Sorry, I'm not used to this computer. And this is actually just a lay when you look at the actual footprint of the building as it exists right now. So it kind of gives you the overview of where the parking is, where the play spaces are, what the existing building looks like. And this is showing you, again, it's kind of that aerial view of where the existing is that's going to be demolished, and they've got the box around that, the part of the parking lot that you were just looking at on our construction map. And then you can actually see on this view what the new construction looks like. Because the new construction goes vertical, the footprint is not that much bigger, and that was really important to the community and the folks that live around the building, because behind the building, there's actually a lot of green space and some outdoor gardens, and the vast majority, none of the trees are touched that are behind the building, because the footprint is not that much bigger. And for the most part, the footprint barely expands beyond where the trailers are right now, because behind the building, we have the trailers sitting there. This is actually an interior view, where you're looking at the lower-level entrance. And this entrance addresses some of the questions people had very early on, and I remember the Planning Commission asking about how will it be accessible if somebody wants to use it for park and rec on the weekends for little kids' basketball or something of that nature. And when you look on the bottom right, in that bottom right-hand square, that's the gym, little kids' gym. It will have the same type of floor that we put in at TJ, which is rubberized, great maintenance long-term. It also has a stage on the left-hand side, so we'll have a small theatrical area where we could, you know, do things on the weekend or the evenings. Then in the center portion, you'll see the cafeteria, which is right in the middle, and then the media center, the large spaces on that back end that looks out over the trees and the green space. We also have our music. Most of our ancillary spaces are on this lower level. And it's also the entrance that is at the ground level when you walk into the building on the front side, and that's on that left-hand side. This is showing you the next level, what we call the main level, and this is the level that actually connects to the rest of the building. So what will happen is, and most of you know, if you've been in Mount Daniel, well, all of you know, there's a big ramp right now. What this will do is level that out. That ramp obviously is gone because we've demolished that side of the building. So this floor is level with the rest of the building. So this is your main level, and this has all 12 new classrooms here. And the other thing I'll point out is on the right-hand side, you'll see that says "outdoor classroom." We're also putting in this, in this building, trying to make sure we're focused on STEAM education. And so this is an outdoor garden area that is a rooftop space, similar to what we have for those that have you seen Thackeray, where we have a rooftop play area. This is a rooftop outdoor garden space. And then that actually connects on, again, to this existing building. The existing building is fairly similar. There are some reconfigurations. When you look on the far-right-hand side where it says "kindergarten classroom," that's actually where the office is now. So all of that space is being reconfigured, because all of the office areas are brand-new. This is showing you the upper level. The upper level is where our older students, let's say, older second grade, which are on the top level. And again, it almost really feels like a one-story in many regards, because the main level is where the whole building connects. And up on the top, you'll actually see, and we don't have the outdoor garden space here like we had on the first-grade level, you have the STEAM lab, which is just kind of on the top in the middle. The other thing that you can really see in these pictures is you see the big white portion in the center. And this is that effort to get as much natural light into this building as possible. And so the actual natural light goes all the way down through the cafeteria, so you have natural light coming in the roof of the cafeteria as well. And it also allows natural light in those few classrooms that aren't on the outside wall. And again, this part of this is driven by the footprint of the building and working with basically a square. And the other classrooms all have windows that look to the outside. This is showing you the interior of a kindergarten classroom. And with the construction process that we use, we meet almost every Wednesday, and as we get into the project, we do meet every Wednesday. And there are certain meetings where lots of teachers are there, community members are there, it just depends on the type of the meeting. So every shelf, where the sinks go, where the tile is in the room, those are all driven by what the classroom teachers feel is the best design for their classroom. So the kindergarten teachers have very much modeled after some of the existing classrooms that we have now, in that they like the wet space separate from the carpet, the cubby areas when you come in the door, so if they've been out in the mud, that's, you know, on the wet area instead of right on the carpet. Kindergarten classrooms all have a restroom. For the little ones, they feel like that's really essential. When you look at some new kindergarten classroom, too, this is just a different, there's one or two classrooms that are in unusual spaces that get reconfigured, so it's just showing how those got reconfigured. They're a little bit different. This is a typical first-grade classroom, very, very similar to the actual kindergarten classroom. And this is a typical second-grade classroom. The biggest difference in a second-grade classroom is that the restrooms are joined but out in the hall, so they actually capture a little bit more floor space, but the kids just go outside, and you're kind of helping kids transition and learn how to start going down the hall to the restroom. So when they go to TJ, it's not different for these children. And you'll notice the floor space looks more open, and that's because they don't have the same cubby structures as children start getting a little bit older. This is the outside rendering of the building and what it looks like right now. And it does have, obviously, the different colors of the brickwork that's on the front, the windows, that was really important to people to have a lot of natural light in this building. And the front entrance is a kind of a purple, a Mount Daniel purple. And even down to, you'll notice on the right-hand side where there's a hippo, there's actually going to be a hippo there. That's really important to everybody, that when children are coming in for kindergarten for that first day of school ever in Falls Church City, they can take their picture with the purple hippo there. So trying to make it a really lovely, little-kid-friendly place. The other thing that we're doing is, you'll notice, again, we talked about STEAM earlier and making sure we're building in spaces around, in and around the building, is the front side of the building where the white kind of roof is, is the old entrance, where there are some classrooms. But all that garden area is maintained up there. So on the top of that retaining wall, they actually maintain that outdoor garden space, which is lovely right now, if you go up there and look at it, picnic tables. So on both sides of the building, the front and the back, there's outdoor classroom area. They have their roof space, outdoor garden area, and also the STEAM lab. This is looking from the side, where you can see the play space that is the rooftop garden. You can see where the play equipment is and what that looks like on the backside. And when you're all the way on the back of the building, you'll notice the windows are almost the entire length of the classrooms. That's one aspect that we actually increased and made sure we got as many windows as possible. That's one thing at TJ we absolutely love about those classrooms, there's a lot of natural light, and that was real important. And originally, the windows were, we had about 15 feet, now they're just over 20. So lots of natural light in these classrooms, so those are the windows you're seeing into the back classrooms. And I think that that was it. That kind of gives you an overview of what's in the building. I do have also a flyer, and then I'll take questions as well, but just while I am thinking of it for the community visioning on Saturday, we are very hard at work with lots of work right now on George Mason and MEH, and it's the community visioning to really talk about what does the community want and see and envision on that main campus where Mason is. So I hope that everybody will come and participate with us on Saturday. I think it's going to be a great event, and we'll get lots of information from our community. So I'm happy to take questions about Mount Daniel.
Yeah, a couple of questions. There was a question of LEED certification when you started this project, and is it true that that is off the table because of budgetary reasons?
We have never, the school board's never changed the process from the school board perspective. When the RFP was written, we are building to a LEED standard scorecard. So we actually keep the scorecard, we can tell you what all those components are, but what we didn't do is commit to commissioning for that extra, it was almost $100,000. That hasn't changed. We did let city council know that we really needed to know by December, and if you can remember back in December, budget was not looking great. We didn't, we were afraid that the school budget wasn't going to be funded, let alone being able to pay for something like LEED. They were not able to commit that extra $100,000 for us to make a commitment to commission. So we are still building to LEED Silver. We have the scorecard, it's going to be a great, healthy, beautiful building. We just are not paying that extra for the plaque and commissioning.
Okay. And then the next question I have is, what's your timeline on this project?
This project from day one has been scheduled for October 2016, and that is because we did a November referendum. So in order to get a fair contract for a construction company, they weren't going to sign for a September or July. However, they're doing everything imaginable to get this building open. They're accustomed to building for schools, and they know that it's, an October opening would be a challenge, and we've known that all along. But right now, we're doing great, and I'm very optimistic. They're used to building with schools that they'll get us in in September, unless we just have a huge big hiccup, you know, lots of rain or something unanticipated, which can always happen.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming and giving us a presentation, because we were very anxious to see what's going on, because we know that it's being covered by the Fairfax County Planning Commission, but it is with our city's funds.
Absolutely.
And we are very, very concerned to make sure our funds from the city are spent I would like somewhere in the future to see the types of materials that are going to be in there for informational purposes. In my many, many years of experience of building and remodeling and everything, I think that sometimes we value engineer and materials, and it comes to show, you know, within five, 10 years. And I think that is a very, very bad thing for us to perpetuate. I am concerned about the LEED certification, mainly because as a city, we require that for all new buildings. And for us to say, oh, well, okay, it's our city's building, so we can fudge on that. But I want to make it loud and clear that a new building at George Mason better, you know, be LEED certified, because I just think it's very important for what we ask of everybody else to make sure that we get it, get it in our own school buildings and our own municipal buildings. One thing that I was concerned about, I heard that there was some delay in demolition for the summer. Have the permits gone through that?
There's no delay right now. We have always said demolition's as fast as we can do it when school gets out. What we're waiting on right now is we have to have our hearing with Fairfax County first, which is our 2232. It was scheduled for the 18th. Today, they were saying, could be the 23rd. What we're trying to really put, we've got to have that permit before we can do it, but we're not concerned about a delay at all.
Right.
Yeah, I may be saying something different in July or August, I hope not, but...
Our main concern is to make sure that as much as possible be known about how city funds are being spent.
Right.
And I think that's important to all the citizens.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to come before Planning Commission more often. You know, I think I was here maybe right before in November, October, November, but certainly with the amount of projects that we have going on, there's something going on in every building. We're just finishing Thackeray, and that's the only building out of five that won't, you know, we won't have to go back in, so, for anything.
One more quick question. I saw in those designs of the classrooms, a lot of carpet.
Mm-hmm. There is. With little ones, they like that, and it's preferable. They sit on the floor a lot, and the carpet doesn't last as long, because you have to keep it clean and make sure you get it replaced periodically, but that's teacher preference.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm always concerned about allergies and things like that with them not being cleaned properly and everything.
Yeah, and we do have a really good maintenance custodial staff that makes sure that we do that. We put in all the low VOC tile, we make sure we have hypoallergenic carpet. We actually pay a little extra to have a certain type of carpet that we know in Falls Church has been very hardy and lasts.
And by the way, you mentioned the maintenance people. We do have wonderful maintenance people in every single building, and everybody needs to realize that that's one of the things that keeps our buildings running, particularly George Mason, but all of our buildings have their live-in maintenance custodial staff, and they're very, very important people, and they should never be overlooked.
Thank you for that.
Just real quick, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Unfortunately, my son is going to be entering first grade next year, so we will be wildly impacted by this.
Right.
To that end, I'm looking at these trailers for the first graders.
Unfortunately, no, these are the salad days.
Salad days? I don't know that term. Looking at the first-grade trailers and knowing the existing building, what is, where is the food service going to happen during the construction and the daycare service? I mean, where is there a large aggregating, a large space for when the kids are aggregating over the next year?
Yeah, and those are great questions. And as a staff, because we get everybody around the table, I feel like we've done a really good job of vetting everything that we can. Daycare actually will be operating out of that, where you see the PE, media, and art, because they're not used before school, and Katie Clinton is really excited about that because they'll have kind of the running-around space before school and after school. So they take over all of that back area, on the back blacktop area. Food service is something we started talking about very early on last year, because while we could satellite food in from another school campus, which often school divisions will do, it's too much for our staff. We run very, very lean, and we just don't have the staff to even transport trailers for, you know, food for over 400 kids. So we are planning to contract. Right now, we are working with the Virginia Department of Education. We have to go through an RFP process, and they have to approve our RFP. We will then, hopefully, have that out probably first week in July, and we'll get the bids for those companies that are willing to provide the type of food service that we expect for our children. So it still has to be healthy, has to be fresh. It actually follows Richard Kane, who's our food service director, his same specs. There aren't very many companies that do it, but we know we will have a couple that will respond that do. They will bring the food to us, and we take it to the classrooms, and the children will eat in the classrooms. As little transition as possible for our kids. As little transition as possible for our kids.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi. I'd like to get back to the LEED Silver certification. Can you explain to me how the process works? When you were thinking, I mean, you've planned to have it be LEEDs friendly.
Absolutely.
But how, whatever that means. But you didn't go for the certification because it was going to cost, either according to the paper, $85,000 or $100,000. So somewhere in that ballpark. When you went to city council, did you say, we want another $100,000 for LEED certification? And they said, no?
What we said...
Or did, okay.
Sorry.
Or did you say, this is our budget? And you're thinking in the back of your mind, oh, $100,000 is going to be for LEEDs. But it wasn't conveyed to the city council?
No, it was definitely conveyed. And as a matter of fact, the chairman of city council, the city manager, sat on the RFP committee when we went through the whole vetting process. And it was written into the RFP when they presented to us, and we made our selection. They had to tell us how they were going to build to LEED Silver and what that scorecard would look like, that was part of the process. We also said that we had to know by December, we had an ad, an ad. So, you know, there are certain things that are nice to haves that the company or the construction team will say, we could do this, but, you know, with your budget of $15 million, it's 15.6, but actual construction is 15. We can do LEED for another $85,000. We could do triple the windows for another X amount of dollars. So it was an ad. And that's how we communicated that this is an add to the 15 million. Here's what it costs, $85,000. We must know by December, or we are too far into the process. Right now, our plans are 95%. And, you know, our lead architect, as difficult as it was for him to not take us through commissioning, he sat on the board for, or I think it's called the Green Council, but sat on their board, he's a lead architect. But he has said it'd be incredibly, incredibly difficult for us to even fathom doing that right now. And also, simply, we're on a fast timeline. We have things that have to be done this summer. And we haven't, you have to have your commissioning agent in, you're supposed to, from the very beginning. And, you know, one thing he shared even sitting on the board, he said, I have never seen a LEED project that was 95% with their plans and all their submittals that was able to come back and say, okay, let's go back and do LEED when you've missed all of those preliminary meetings, because they have to be able to approve that. So it was just, we just didn't have the money as a city for the add that was 85,000. The other piece now is because it would need some redrawing and some work, again, for the commissioning to meet the, you have to provide things for the commissioning agent that are different than just the windows. It's just the written materials and the evaluation materials. It would be more than 85. And the quote, they'd said probably 130, 140, because we'd have to ask our architects and engineers to go back and do what they need to do, just to provide materials. More than anything, you're paying for the time of the paperwork portion.
Well, my concern is that if you've got $15 million as a budget for your school, and I don't ever remember any of these schools coming in under budget.
All of ours have, so far.
Oh, well, good for you.
TJ has, Thackeray, it won't be much, but we'll probably have $10,000 saving in Thackeray. We had savings at Mary Ellen, so I'm knocking on wood. This one definitely will not be over budget. It just won't be. Will it be under? I don't know.
I'm just wondering how impossible it is to find 85 to 100,000 in a $15 million budget to, that couldn't...
You mean right now, or if we had done at the beginning?
During that time, that you couldn't have figured out how to do it. The reason I'm asking this is it's really embarrassing for us to be requiring buildings that come into us, and we're saying, you have to do LEEDs. I mean, that's, that's a city desire, and we want you to do it as standard. And, you know, they look at us and they say, what about your public buildings? I mean, it's going to be the same with this courthouse revision. You know, we want to make sure that they're going to do that LEEDs. I mean, you can't, you can't ask outsiders to come in and force them to do it if we're not doing it ourselves.
Well, and I think that's, you know, a discussion the school board is certainly open to. Whenever the policy for city was put in place, it doesn't apply to schools that can't by law, by Virginia code, because schools are responsible for taking care of building schools. And so they gave the flexibility to the school board. And in all honesty, the buildings, I don't think people realize the value we are getting with what we're spending on construction. Our square footage cost is extremely low. Grunley and Samoa will tell you that they're, you know, if you go and look at the buildings in our surrounding areas, they're paying a lot more per square foot. We, you know, we set a guaranteed maximum price, and we hold their feet to the fire. And because it's competitive, and they're really competing for the projects, we're getting really great pricing on our buildings. And for the school board perspective and the budgets that we're working with, it really does get down to what does $100,000 buy? And if it's bigger windows for children in the classrooms, that's where they've chosen, that's what they've chosen to do. And that really has been what's behind it. It's making sure we're maximizing the building for children.
I understand.
And it's hard, I know.
I understand it's difficult, we just have to ask the question.
Yeah, no, it's great. I mean, I welcome the questions. And I know with George Mason, MEH, you know, we're all hoping that, you know, as we go through that process, we'll get great feedback from the community on what really is important in this building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for those future buildings, we've gotten a lot of feedback that LEED is really important. And the fact is, it would cost more now because we didn't start the project saying we're going to do LEED. We said it, ah, we'll try to build to LEED. And so to me, I think the real answer to this isn't what the cost is, is that we made a decision that we weren't going to spend the money on LEED. And I think that's fine if that's the answer. But I will say, like, you talk about, you know, we made a change for bigger windows over maybe energy efficiency. But to me, larger windows need to be more energy efficient, because you do have that loss of heat and cooling.
Yeah, if you don't mind, let me just clarify, because we are building to LEED standard. And I'm happy to have the construction company come and share with you the scorecard and everything that they're doing. They did meet with Dan Z, he's passionate about this issue. We had a phone conference where they went through and said, these are all of the things we're doing with the LEED scorecards. So we haven't cut back energy efficiency or any of those components for a LEED Silver building. It is the commissioning, but...
Well, you mentioned the larger windows, and I thought maybe that was a cost issue. But I will just say that, I'm glad you're building a LEED standard. It means nothing without the certification. It really doesn't. Because we don't know for sure that they actually met the scorecard. But, you know, that's going to be a continuous argument in the city, because every time we build something, we're going to ask for LEED. I think we see citizens ask for LEED, and we may or may not do it. And I mean, the, I mean, City Hall has its own issues in terms of, like, we're doing some rebuilding here, is it going to be LEED? Who knows? I will say, I just wanted to get like a specific idea of where you guys are. So you have a site plan approved from Fairfax County?
We're 95%, yes.
So when do you think it'll be approved?
We, after, they can't do it until after our 2232, and we're hoping it's within days after that. It was scheduled for the 18th. Today, they were throwing a different date around, that was about four or five days later, just trying to work with their schedules. And then we would hope very, very quickly. They've said the demolition permit, that's what we need first, and that will come quickly.
Okay, so it's the 2232, then the demolition permit, then the site plan approval?
Well, we've already, our site plan approval is in. When we're at 95%, that's what they're approving right now. And it's at 95%, it's in with Fairfax County. But the 2232 is part of this whole process, where the community that live in and around there come and say what they like and they don't like. We were in front of the McLean Association about three weeks ago, where they have a chance to come and say what they like, what they don't like. And we're working really well with them, so we feel positive about the process. We're really trying to work with the community around there as well.
So have we, did we have to make any major changes to our plans based on public comments or the planning commissioners in Fairfax or the staff there? Just curious if they forced us to make any changes.
As a matter of fact, you know, I've said this to the school board, we've been absolutely delighted working with Fairfax County. And I think the relationship between Falls Church and Fairfax is obviously in a great place after everything the city and Fairfax have worked through with the water, because they've been nothing but gracious. And when we had our McLean Citizens Association meeting, they actually, you know, shared that they are in support of the project, that the project is meeting all of the requirements, that there is, there is nothing that should keep us from having this approved. And they're very supportive, and we have their support going forward to their planning commission.
Yeah, and how about any technical changes in regards to like the fire marshals, the building inspector, kind of?
We really have had almost nothing. Probably the biggest challenge was just stormwater early on because of the new requirements. And Fairfax County, if you've watched what's going on in the paper, we were the second project. The first one, my understanding is the first one, was the Silver Line, because they, and if you've read about that, how stormwater's impacting the rest of the Silver Line, we were only the second project. Because if we could have submitted back before June 30th, which we knew, we could have had the waiver and not been under the new requirements. Well, everybody that had projects in the pipeline did that. We could not, because I, as the school superintendent or school board, couldn't commit public money and be paying for, you know, major drawings when the referendum had not been approved. So we knew we were going to be dealing with that. And that really was the hardest, and it's because Fairfax County had these new regs as well. And it's like, how do you interpret what we do or don't need to do? And, you know, the first time we met, it was like, do we really have to worry about the underground stormwater all the way from Mount Daniel? And then they said to the West Metro. Well, of course, it's like, well, that's not reasonable. That would cost almost the cost of the whole project. So they're working through all those different issues about what is the best way to retain the stormwater at Mount Daniel. So it's a large retention system that, it's huge. And it, very similar to what we did at Thackeray, is what's being installed at Mount Daniel to make sure that we are getting all that runoff at Mount Daniel.
Where's it being installed? Under the new building, underneath it?
It's actually not under the new building. And I'm happy to send the plans over to you. It's kind of on the back end of the playground, and it's a big oblong, huge, big oblong kind of tank towards the back end.
I mean, but it's below ground.
Yes, yeah, it's underground.
You guys are going to have to excavate back there as well.
Yeah, well, yeah, where the stormwater goes, they will, once it's all done, you won't really know it's there.
Right.
Just like at Thackeray, yeah.
Yeah. But no, I just, because I don't think that was shown on here, like where that's going to be dug up as well, but...
Yeah, I didn't bring the actual technical drawings. I'm happy to bring this back to you again, or even just leave them for you to look through. And I almost brought them actually, they're sitting on my desk. And then I thought, well, one big ol' plan, it was raining, I didn't want to get them wet either, so...
Mr. Rankin, any questions?
Just a quick question. If the completion is delayed into October, what is the plan for the second graders?
To be honest with you, it's too early for me to make that determination because I don't know class size. And to give you the biggest example is, you know, let's say we do have another kindergarten class that is 200 some odd children. Those class sizes, and then it impact us enormously. If it's 160, it's easier for us to cope with ulterior spaces. The reality is our second grade could stay at TJ. We're worried about pressures there. And again, are we going to have a ton of third and fourth graders enroll next year, which is really going to make that building full?
But could you end up moving them mid-school year or splitting them across?
We could do like we did for, at Thackeray. You know, we did a mid-year move at Thackeray, not ideal. We would make sure we worked with staff and the community to have the best timing if we decided to do that. And again, it'll really depend on what does enrollment growth look like? Because TJ happens to be the building right now where we're at 780 children. And we've grown more than, you know, 30 odd children during the school year. So I'm really watching those grade levels as well. We'll have four or five grade levels next year in our lower elementaries that are over 200. So it's a watch and see. And we know next spring, we have quite a few apartments coming online, so I don't know how those are going to impact us or not. And it may take two or three years before we even see children from there, or it may happen quickly because they're beautiful, lovely apartments. So that could have an impact on what our decision-making is to as we watch enrollment.
Okay, great, thank you so much for coming and taking the time. We appreciate it. We're going to move on now to item seven, which is other business. And I, the, I don't think we have any other business, but I have a technical question. Can we just leave, so I have, I saved mine from last time. What should we, what, do we need these? We're just going to leave these here.
You know, we were told to keep the other stuff, and we did. And then we get all this, and it's the same date. What a waste.
All right, so I'm just going to leave mine here, if that's okay. Okay, so I would like a motion to approve the minutes, unless anyone has any changes or questions or comments from the minutes of the 18th day of May. Motion to approve the minutes. I move to...
No.
Okay. I will...
Okay. Line 122. It says, following the presentation, the planning commissioners asked questions about the recommendations made by the, whatever. Staff provided responses to those questions. I would be very interested in seeing the responses to the questions in our minutes, because I thought some of them, some of the questions were a little bit difficult. And we weren't absolutely convinced that the responses addressed those things. So I'd like to see them if possible. Is that a possibility, Ms. G? Well, you know what I mean.
Well, so, okay, here's what I would suggest then. Let's hold off the approval of the minutes until our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So I would like a motion to defer the approval of the minutes.
I so move.
A second.
Somebody second it.
A second. Moved and seconded, we'll approve the minutes next time. Planning Commission reports. Excellent, seeing none, planning direct...
You're not looking.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
The Housing Commission is holding a tenant management meeting for the Broad Falls people tomorrow night at 7:30 over at St. James to try to alleviate some of the difficulties that are happening there.
Okay, good.
Today, in the Washington Post, oh, no, Sunday, Washington Post metro section, there's an article about trying to turn a corner on a faded landmark about seven corners.
Yes.
We have commented on that before. And apparently, it is moving towards final approval by the Fairfax County Supervisors. And there still seems to be a road going through some parts of Falls Church. I need an update on that. And I'd like to get it before they actually vote, so that if we have some objections, someone can go and speak. Mr. Bruce?
Yeah, that article, I don't, I do not believe is accurate. So, the graphic...
Yeah, because that was an older graphic, I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the preliminary vote that they were going to do was 5-5. So they're not, there's a lot of work yet to be done. So, but, you know, what is in the draft proposal or draft comprehensive plan amendment, I believe meets the concerns that were raised by the city council when Supervisor Gross was here. So everything that I have been aware of seems like it's been addressed.
Well, but she's, you know, she is being opposed in her primary because some people don't agree with her vision on this particular project. So, you know, it may not be our vision.
That's a Fairfax County issue, you know.
I understand that, but I mean, what I'm saying is there's some controversy surrounding it. So I'd like to get an update if we could.
Well, I've seen, just to add, so I dismiss this article because I've seen Regency's plan, who owns Wilston Plaza 2. And they are actually in for, they're in for full approval of their site. And that initiated part of that comprehensive plan. And their part of this looks nothing like that. So if you took their plan and you put it on that picture...
It would be reassured.
They don't, they don't connect. So, so, so... So someone has a hole in their bucket.
Okay, but if we could, if we could get some accurate information, it would quell our fears.
Yeah, maybe we can talk afterwards, and you can tell me specifically what it is.
Well, all I know is what I read in the paper.
Right.
I think that graphic is not representative of the plan, so I think...
Okay, but we can get an update today.
Yes.
And you...
Thank you. Sorry.
Anyone else on the, on the planning commission reports?
I have none.
Excellent.
Did you, did you miss, did you mention the topping?
We had fun at the topping.
Yeah, we did have fun.
And it was mainly about the construction workers, not about the city. It was pretty awesome. They served lunch to about 300 other workers.
Oh, the topping off.
Yeah, we got, I'm sorry, Harris teeter. And we got to go way up high.
Scary.
It was.
It was. I didn't go up the last two, you know, that iron staircase up the back. I didn't go up the last two.
Yeah. But it was, it was a really nice ceremony and they were very excited. And I think, and Bruce was there as well.
But it was so nice that the workers got...
I reserve an apartment. Actually, there was, there was a neighbor from Winter Hill there who was looking for an apartment.
Actually, there were two, there were two.
Yeah, they were planning a move there.
All right, so that takes us to, well, so Planning Directors' report. I would just, and maybe the fault is mine, but I would make this humble request. I missed until whatever time it was, 2 o'clock this afternoon, that we had a work session with the city council. And so maybe that was on our schedule, but it wasn't on my schedule until the 11th hour.
There was a back and forth and we had, we had been checking and we thought, we heard Friday that there was not going to be a joint one. And then we heard this morning there was, so.
Okay.
That is, we are, we are trying real hard to communicate between the west and east wings and sometimes it's not perfect. That was, Ms. G and I talked about that this morning where Friday, we thought it was off. And this morning, we found that was on, so.
Okay.
We will try to continue to get that more solid. We do appreciate the commission being there. And we did have, there was a lot of extensive discussion by council. So it's always helpful when you can be there when we're doing these plans. And that's certainly our preference as a planning staff is to have you present, so.
These joint work sessions, less is better than more. So that would be one thought. But if we have to do them, let's, let's have the freedom to have, you know, some kind of interaction that's, you know, we, because like tonight, we were really pressed for time. And it would have been better on this to have a little bit more time. Now, because we have a walking tour, it's no big deal. But let's, I mean...
And I also would encourage council, there's, you know, a lot of extensive discussion. That'll be on Granicus so we can catch up with council members' comments as well.
All right. Anything else? Planning Directors' report?
Not really. It's been very busy and will continue to be so.
Okay, fine. You missed our discussion on the scheduling, but you can watch Granicus because it was interesting. I had, I think I had some funny jokes in there.
Granicus is the video recording.
Pretty entertaining.
It was just, it was a similar discussion that we had before that it is very hard to have the first public meeting on the night you want us to vote. And that is very nice to have a public meeting and then another meeting where we get the vote.
Yeah, so we're not doing that. We are also not having, and I told the developer and he agrees, we're not going to have our first work session with them as a joint work session with the city council. Because that will be silly. But I'm happy to have a work session because we have some time.
Hey, since you're bringing that up, I think it's scheduled for June 22nd, joint work session to talk about it. I'm out of town. I'd love to have it a different day so I could be there, so.
Well, maybe that city council can have that day and we can have, like, will you be here Wednesday?
I'm at, I'm at the beach all that week.
All right, we'll reschedule.
I can watch it on Granicus.
You could watch it on Granicus. We'll try to reschedule. Okay, that's excellent. Motion to adjourn.